I'd like to call the Monday, January 6, 2025 Oakwood City Council Meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Turbin.
Here.
Mrs. Jackson.
Here.
Thank you, and may I have a report on the minutes of our December 2, 2024 Regular Session and Work Session, Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, Mayor. I have read the minutes for the Regular Session, Work Sessions, on the date you mentioned, and upon review, I've found them to be complete and correct. I move that we accept the minutes as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. This is an exciting council meeting that we're having this evening, especially once I find my documents. We have two public safety offers to give the oath of office to, and, okay, all right, thank you for that. And our first public safety officer is Natalie Florrie, and I'm going to have you come down in front so the people can see you on TV, and we'll have Chief Hill also come down, and I will give you the oath of office.
Here.
Thank you.
Officer Natalie Florrie began her public safety career with the Dayton Police Department in 2018. During her time with the city of Dayton, Officer Florrie served in the Road Patrol Division and was also an assigned evidence technician for the Dayton homicide unit. In addition to be a certified evidence technician, Officer Florrie is also a certified bike patrol officer, officer, and a state-certified law enforcement training instructor. Prior to joining the Dayton Police Department, Officer Florrie worked as a personal trainer and served in the Army National Guard from 2020, or from 2014 to 2020. During her time in the National Guard, Officer Florrie received the Army Accommodation Medal, two Army Reserve Achievement Medals, a professional development ribbon, a service ribbon, and the Army Reserve Component Overseas Training Ribbon. Natalie, thank you for your service to our country. Officer Florrie is a Dayton native, a graduate of Valley, of Valley View High School. She also received her bachelor's degree from Otterbein University in Promotion and Fitness with a minor in Nutrition in 2014. She recently graduated the Sinclair Fire Training Program, completing both her basic fire school and EMS training. Officer Florrie is now in the process of completing her field training program and will soon be working on her own. So, please join me in welcoming Natalie to the Oakwood Public Safety Department.
If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
And I will obey the law, and will obey the laws thereof.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And that I will, in all respects, uphold and enforce.
Uphold and enforce.
The provisions of the Charter.
The provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the city.
And the ordinance of the city.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of public safety officer.
The duties of the public safety officer.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
his spouse, Jen Warwick, is also here. Jen, would you raise your hand? Well, we can raise it higher than that. Okay, thank you, welcome, and those are your kids? Great, welcome, all right. If you want to come up, and I'll have, give it, mic back to Alan, and he can talk a little bit about you, and I'll issue the oath of office to you.
Officer Chris Warwick began his public safety career with the Huber Heights Fire Department in September of 2009, where he served as a firefighter paramedic. Prior to joining Huber Heights, Officer Warwick also served as a part-time firefighter paramedic for both the city of West Carrollton and the Miami Township Division of Fire. During his time in Huber Heights, Officer Warwick received two Star of Life Awards for his treatment of a trauma patient involving a traffic accident victim and also rescuing a victim from a house fire. Officer Warwick had also received a Medal of Valor for rescuing a trapped victim in a house fire in December of 2016, and received a second Medal of Valor Award in November of 2021 for again rescuing a trapped victim in a house fire. And he was also recognized for exceptional medical care to a patient experiencing a heart attack in July of 2023. In addition to being a certified firefighter paramedic, Officer Warwick holds certifications as an advanced tactical medical specialist. He's also certified in tactical decision-making under stress. He's a hazardous materials operator, he, and he possesses vehicle and machinery rescue both Level 1 and Level 2. In addition, Officer Warwick is also a certified fire officer. Officer Warwick recently completed the Sinclair Law Enforcement Basic Training Program and has successfully passed his state law enforcement exam. Officer Warwick is now completing his field training period, so please join me in welcoming Chris Warwick to the Oakwood Public Safety Department.
So if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And that I will, in all respects.
And that I will, in all respects.
Uphold and enforce.
Uphold and enforce.
The provisions of the Charter.
The provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of this city.
And ordinances of this city.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of public safety officer.
The duties of public safety officer.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, on our agenda, under Status Reports, we have, the city council has various council committee assignments. We adopted those at our last annual meeting a year ago in January, and we are proposing no changes to the existing council committee assignments that we have, so I'll make no further report on that. We also have a list of committee assignments, but before I go to that, I want to issue a special recognition to one of the members of our Budget Review Committee and, and former chair until the end of this last year, David Dickerson, has served on our Budget Review Committee, and for as long as I can remember, as chair of our Budget Review Committee. I looked up the background on David, and he has been on our Budget Review Commission for 37 years. So he is stepping down because his work job has required him to do a lot more out-of-town travel, so he's having difficulty coming to our meetings or anticipates that. So I wish David best of luck in his business career, and he is still an Oakwood resident, and I know he was very helpful to city council and our former manager, Norbert Klopsch, when we had issues regarding Oakwood city budget, and always received outstanding advice from him. So congratulations, David. Fred Dudding is now our longest-serving member of our Budget Review Commission, Committee, and he's in his 35th year as a volunteer for the city of Oakwood, so congratulations to you, Fred. The list that we have, that I would like to make a motion that we appoint these folks to, to the various committees, every one of these are volunteers, and we give a lot of great advice and consent, as they say. We have a committee called the ADA Compliance Committee, and William Stevens has agreed to be reappointed to that committee. The Beautification Committee, which is responsible for what's coming up next on our Christmas tree lighting, along with all the other cool things that happen in Oakwood as it relates to keeping our city beautiful. Ted Kircher, David Scheff, Evan Brooks have agreed to be reappointed, and we have a couple still outstanding waiting to hear back from them. In our Budget Review Committee, we have Amanda Maluski Kraus, Christina Marcus, Bill Frappwell, he will be serving as our vice chair, will continue to serve as our vice chair, Michael Vanderburgh, Ella Himes, Ellen Fodge has agreed to step in to replace David as our chair of the Budget Review Committee, and then Doug Kinsey and Chaz Kidwell. And we still have one vacancy there that we're, we're looking for, and we will try to appoint that person hopefully at our next meeting. Under our Planning Commission, I think our current chair of the Planning Commission is Andy Ide, and he has agreed to serve again. We have two, one vacancy still, or, it's not true, we have, John Donnelly has agreed to serve again in one of the various precincts for a property maintenance board, and I'm awaiting a callback from the other person. And then finally, we have a Tax, Water, and Sewer Appeals Board, and Eric Schurck has agreed to serve again in that capacity, and that's the best job ever because they didn't have a meeting in the last two years, so it's a great, it's a great thing to volunteer for, a committee that doesn't meet. So I'd make a motion that these reappointments be made and would ask for a second.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. And now, it is time, under, we're finished with Status Reports, so under the visitors' section of our, of our meeting, is time for our holiday decorating awards, and I'm very excited, are we having a video first? Okay, so we're going to start with a video to show all of the really cool Christmas lights that were all over this town, seemed to me like every other street, every other house probably had their outdoors decorated, and we'll do that video, and then the folks that are here, I will ask them to come up to the front, and we will hand out their awards as well. All right, I will come down, and I know we have, I think, at least three, maybe, maybe four folks here. I will announce, I'll have them come down first, and then I'll announce the names of the other people. If they're not here this evening, we will make sure that we get her, their, award, a major award, right? Okay, I'll be right down. The Beautification Committee divides our city into six, six areas, and we go out and we give an award for both night, a night view of the, of your decorations as well as a day view, and then we also have an award for two of the businesses in our business district. So, in, in Area 4, 343 East Drive, Meredith and Jarrett Finney, are they here? Come on down, welcome. And then Area 6, which was 60 Harmon Terrace, that is Jennifer and Patrick Prickle, are they here? I'm sorry, I'm, that's 930 Harmon Avenue, I looked where the wrong X was, I apologize. 60 Harmon Terrace, Rachel and Ron Barkley, congratulations. And then our, one of our business awards is the Oakwood Florist at 2313 Far Hills Avenue, congratulations. And I don't know if a lot of people know this, but one of the things that NINA does as the owner is a lot of the flowers that you'll see up and down, the exteriors of a lot of the buildings in the Oakwood Business District, you provide them to the other business owners, and I believe at no cost. And we appreciate that because our business district always looks good, and especially a lot of the flowers that, that NINA's people put up in our city, so thank you. I'll just read the others. In Area 1, 201 Shance, Michelle, and Michael Greaser, and the nighttime award on 223 Volusia is the Dubic family. And then Area 2, the O'Connor family at 36 Spirea, and the nighttime award was the Foley family at 127 East Dixon. And then Area 3 was the Connor, we had O'Connor family, I'm sorry, and then Area 3 is the Connor family, and they're 416 Wilcher Boulevard. And then at nighttime award, the Cox family, 101 Foyer Boulevard. That was one of my favorites because I, their next-door neighbor has a sign, it's like a four-by-eight sign, and it's lit up, and it just says ditto, you know, thinking that if we could only do it as well as that family, and it's really cool. And then Sherri Scanlon is Area 4 Day, and she's 252 Wonderly Avenue. And then Area 5 is Laura Scalise, she's 20 Oak Knoll Drive, and the night award in Area 5 is Lisa and Stephen Shrek, 2425 Ridgeway Road. And then, I already announced the award on 930 Harmon, and then the final business award was Maria Gasser Designs, and that was 2509 Far Hills Avenue. So congratulations to all of you. So we'll now go to the visitors' part of our meeting, for anyone who's not here to receive an award, and they want to address council on any matters, this would be your time to come down to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and we would welcome you. Okay, very good. Again, we, we thank all of you for coming on this beautiful day in, in the city of Oakwood. So, we will conclude our visitors' section. Under legislation, I have a resolution to continue participating in a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan in conjunction with Montgomery County's Office of Emergency Management. Since 2004, Oakwood has participated in the Montgomery County National Hazard Mitigation Plan, a countywide emergency management and mitigation plan to address regional vulnerability to national disasters. The plan was last updated in 2019, at which time council adopted Resolution 1858 to authorize the city's continued participation. The plan has now been updated for 2025. This resolution will authorize Oakwood's continued participation in ways that are feasible and appropriate to the city's needs, resources, and responsibilities in the community. I would move that council adopt this resolution tonight and would ask for a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments by council? All right, hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin.
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson.
Yes.
Well, thank you, we're off to a great start as it relates to time. That concludes our legislation, it is now time for our city manager's report, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick updates this evening. In addition to our two PSOs, Chris Warwick and Natalie Florrie, I also wanted to welcome Lisa Gower, who is our new Assistant Finance Director for the city, as well as Joe O'Brien, who was a general service worker in the Public Works Department, and we are continuing our hiring efforts with looking at part-time groundskeeper position in the Leisure Services Department, and then fulfilling the finance director role in the weeks that are coming. So, welcome to those candidates, we're happy to have them on board, and members of the Oakwood family. Secondly, I just wanted to send some kudos to our Public Works Department with Operation Snowfall that we had on Sunday. We ran three crews starting on Sunday. The first crew of plow drivers came in at noon and worked until 10:00 PM. Sidewalk crew of five came in at 7:00 on Sunday, and they worked through 4:00 today. Second crew of six plow drivers came in at 10:00 and worked through the night, and they worked through 4:00 today, and then there will be, first crew will circle back today after 4:00 to continue their efforts. So, huge shout-out to Public Works, thank you for all your efforts and your overnight attempts to keep our city clean and clear. That's it.
Any questions for our city manager? All right, then it is now time for council comments, and we will start with Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. Given today's weather conditions, I want to encourage participation in Oakwood's Public Safety Acorn Program. If you live alone, or especially if you're a senior citizen or at risk, the Acorn Program is a program initiated by our public safety officers. The way it works is that you complete an online questionnaire from, that you can access from our city's website. It captures information about your home, emergency contacts, and medical condition. Next, safety officers develop a safety plan specific to you. Minutes can make a difference in an emergency. We all know that, so please consider enrolling in the program, it helps our public safety officers help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turbin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, Happy New Year. I'd like to take just a few minutes to talk about Oakwood's Sister City Program. If you're not familiar with them, we have a very active Sister City Program, and we currently have two amazing, wonderful sister cities. One in France, La Vezaine, which is right outside of Paris, and the other is Outremont, which is in Canada, which is right outside of Montreal. You know, sister cities are typically chosen because there are some like similarities, like in population, or size, or green space, or things like that, but more so, it talks about the values of those cities. And I can personally tell you firsthand that La Vezaine is a beautiful, wonderful city, and I heard that Outremont is equally as nice. You know, the association's mission is to promote peace through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation, one individual, one community at a time. It truly is an amazing association. I would encourage anyone who has an interest in travel, or wants to just learn more about the Sister City Association, to please, please look us up. And I'll tell you how. On February 22nd, they're having a wine tasting at the OCC, and there's going to be wines from around the world and appetizers, and it would just be a great way to meet the different members and learn about the Sister City, Sister City Program. In addition, the association is hosting an international tennis tournament in Outremont this summer, which is going to be wonderful. Outremont is, it is going to be their 100th anniversary of their founding and their 50th anniversary between Outremont and La Vezaine, so it'll be a grand celebration, and it will be a wonderful time to learn a different culture and make new friends. So if you're interested in travel and/or tennis, mark your calendars for Saturday, February 22nd, for the wine tasting, and there will be more information on this that'll be in the Oakwood scene, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens.
Just one quick comment, coming off of the city manager's comments about our wonderful Public Works Department, how hard they work. You know, it's a combination of, there's a, I'll give a, a quick comment about the, you know, they can only work so many hours, a lot of people wonder why more streets aren't cleaned sooner, well, they're doing the main roads and the ones with the hills. The one thing I ask is that when we know a snow event is coming, especially a large one, even if we don't know it's coming, if people would try to park their vehicles in their driveways or in their garages, many reasons for that. One, efficiency of our Public Works Department to clean the streets. Two, with snow, you know, it's going to make the, the roads narrower, the cars that are parked in the streets are going to be more likely to get hit by a passing vehicle, and also, your car's going to get blocked in if they're plowing towards the sidewalk, so, especially if there's a boulevard, and it's tricky to really move everything onto the boulevard or off to the side of the street, so it's just, it's a lot better, safety, efficiency of Public Works, if we can get everybody to pull their cars in their driveway until they can get the, the roads plowed. That's really, it's something that's concerned me over the years, and I'm just making a little public announcement here to see if we can get people to do that. Even if you can't do it that evening, do it first thing in the morning, clear your car off, pull it in the driveway, let them clean it off, and then, you know, you can pull your car back in the street after they plow the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Byington.
No comments, Your Honor.
Thank you. In addition to the two public safety officers that I had the opportunity to swear in this evening, we had a couple other officers that had some significant events here last month that happened after, after our December meeting. The Kettering Regional SWAT event occurred, and we have two, or there was two Oakwood Public Safety Officers that were recognized for their contributions to the team in 2024. Public Safety Officer Ryan Wells received the 2024 Team Rookie of the Year, and also PSO Matt Staley received the 2024 Teamwork Award. The third accompanying them for that banquet and award ceremony was The third accompanying them for that banquet and award ceremony was PSO Cameron McElroy. Those three people, the Regional SWAT team has 20, it's a regional effort, they have 26 members from several TCSU agencies. TCSU is the Tactical Crime Suppression Unit, and we have, you know, Oakwood currently has three members of that 26 in that group, and we're hoping to add a fourth member here this year, which would be our maximum participation that we could provide to the regional efforts on crime, crime mitigation. And then also at that annual banquet, Detective Ballinger, Casey Ballinger, was recognized by the TCSU Director as the TCSU Investigator of the Year. Casey's recognition stems from her involvement with the follow-up investigation and subsequent arrest of the Hunting National Bank robbery suspect, and her work on a significant fraud investigation that will result in a $515,000 forfeiture. She was also recognized for her contributions and work with the Miami Valley Human Trafficking Task Force. I want to congratulate Chief Hill for, you know, the fine quality of all the public safety officers that we have and continue to have, and, and the efforts of every one of these people is far above average for a tiny little community of 9,600 people. So please give our regards on behalf of council to all of your members, and we continue to look forward to making Oakwood the safe community that it's known to be. Okay. And I have no other comments, so our next meeting is going to be on Monday, February 3rd, and we will see you again on TV or in person at 7:30 PM. We are adjourned. Thank you. Oh.